Well, the Audit Committee to us is the Audit Committee of State. That's different.
Good evening, everyone. If trustees could take your seats, we'll be ready to begin in a moment. And just a note that trustee Peddle is joining us on the phone. And if we can call this meeting to order and begin with singing of "Oh, Canada".
(Singing) Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all our sons command. With glowing hearts we see the stars, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
I will be a mover and a secondor for the approval of this agenda. Do I have a mover? Trustee Gustaf Goyd, a secondor. Trustee Bishop. May I have a motion appointing Heather Miller and Jackie Penman as scrutineers for this evening? Mover, trustee Simmons. Secondor, I just heard trustee Peddle.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
In favor.
That is, I believe unanimous. Thank you. And now it is time for the election of the Chair. I will call for nominations for the position of Chair. And I would remind that no secondor is required. Trustee Mulholland.
Yeah, sure, Director. I'd like to take the pleasure, matter of fact, or with the honor, to put forward a name for the Chair of the Board. I'm sure once you realize who I'm nominating, you will agree with me that this person is very strong supporter of public education. And has in fact, as always, as a figure, dedicated, shall we say, to time and effort to promote public education. And has always supported the staff and the students, all the students of the Hamilton School of District School Board. And I also think this person supports the preservation of the Grand Grindstone Creek. So, I mean, it isn't this time, Mr. Director, I'd like to submit the nomination of trustee Jessica Brennan as Chair of the Board.
Thank you, trustee Mulholland. Are there any more nominations? Are there any more nominations? Are there any more nominations?
No, if you're going to call a nominee to the Chair.
It is moved by trustee Orman and seconded by, may I have a secondor, please? Trustee White, that nominations be closed. To the, all those in favor?
In favor.
That is unanimous. To the motion where trustee Jessica Brennan has been nominated as Chair of the Board. All those in favor?
In favor.
And that is unanimous. Congratulations, Chair Brennan, as I step back to my seat.
Thank you very much. Thank you to the trustees. I now have the, and to my nominee, thank you very much. I now have the privilege and pleasure to call for nominations for the position of Vice Chair. Yes, trustee Dix?
It's now through the Chair. It's my pleasure to nominate trustee Alex Johnstone. Alex is Chair of the HR. She's given great leadership to these areas. Very proud of her role provincially and provincial organization. As a leader, taking leadership role on behalf of this board. Alex, trustee Johnstone is well organized and works very, very well with the fellow trustees. It's my great honor to nominate trustee Alex Johnstone for Vice Chair of the Hamilton School of District.
Thank you. Any other nominations? Yes, trustee Thurston.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It is my absolute honor to nominate trustee Todd White for the position of Vice Chair. Knowing Todd for the past three years, I think we've all witnessed enormous growth, enormous commitment, and professionalism. He has served as the Policy Chair, and we've all seen the work of the Policy Committee. And that only happens if you have a very strong Chair. Todd has joined other committees, finance, probably he's at governance a lot, and numerous other committees that are important to this board. So, it is my absolute honor to put forward his name as Vice Chair of the Hamilton School of District School Board. And through Madam Chair, thank you very much.
Are there any more nominations? Are there any more nominations? Are there any more nominations? Seeing no other nominations, can I have a motion to close nominations? Thank you. Thank you. Trustee Simmons. And do I have a secondor for that? Trustee Bishop, thank you very much. It is moved by trustee Simmons and seconded by trustee Bishop that the nominations be closed. All in favor?
In favor.
Thank you. That is carried unanimous, including the two trusted trustees. Thank you very much. It's now my honor to invite the candidates to speak in reverse order of nominations. And you have up to five minutes. And I'll ask this trustee who's sitting beside me to keep the clock. And so, in terms of the process by which people were nominated, the first presentation would be from trustee White.
Thank you very much, new Madam Chair. It's good to see you up there. I just want to take the opportunity to say thank you to my nominator. Her kind words are much appreciated. And at this point in time, I must say that this is one of the most exciting times to be a trustee. As we look at what we've accomplished over the past three years, it's an absolutely enormous amount of work. We look back at our high school accommodation reviews. We're building two brand-new high schools. We've reorganized all of our secondary schools, including an approved program strategy. We've also moved forward with a new inspiring equity fund. We also look at our long-term facilities master plan, a document that we've never had at this board. And for the first time, we have direction moving into the future. Also, when it comes to our community input, our strengths when it comes to public consultation is unmatched. We look at our recent budget consultations. In the first year, we were proud that we had a couple hundred respondents. And this year, we're seeing that triple. So, as we move to the future, we're seeing greater engagement at our school board. And also, we look at the strength of our committees. And through our governance review, we've given a lot of strength to our committees and allowed trustees to provide their input. We look, for instance, at the Policy Committee. We're now on a four-year policy cycle where we will not have those 12-year-old policies any longer. And that's the work of the great folks around this table and, of course, staff. And then also, as I mentioned, we have our governance review. And that was a huge undertaking in terms of changing our practices that we've had for years and years and years. And we're at that exciting point now, we're at implementation. And we're really starting to test a lot of the initiative that we've approved. But you ask yourself, why have we been able to do all of this work? And in many cases, we do not literally write the policy ourselves. We have assistance from staff. And we don't necessarily write all the strategies. But while we may not make the policy, we definitely make the policy better. And we do that from the input from trustees around this table. So, while we may not always agree, in this board room, we debate, we discuss a number of very important issues that affect our students. And while the vote is not always unanimous, our debate makes that stronger. So, as Vice Chair, my commitment would be to create fair discourse in this room, as well as treat every trustee equally, to ensure that we have a voice that is on a level playing field with our colleagues. Also, I've mentioned what we've done in the past. But in addition to the past, and more importantly, is where are we going in the future? And we know in this next year, we have a number of challenges that we have to still undertake. I mentioned the implementation of our previous strategies. We also know that we're going into labor negotiations in the new year. And that will be another challenge we're going to have to face. We know when it comes to academics and our students that we have work to do when it comes to math and math supports. And also, when we look out to our communities, we know that there are partnerships that we could strengthen. Through our secondary reviews, we know that there are some communities that are healing from some of the decisions that were made. And it's important to make a strong effort into those transitions, as we're seeing in Dundas and Alton Mountain and Lower City. This is a lot of work that is very, very important to our communities. And we have the opportunity to strengthen that and make these plans a reality before the term changes next year. But you ask yourselves, why do we do all of this? And I would have definitely in mind, everyone around this table is here for our students. And I had the pleasure of working with Philip, one of our student trustees. And it's been a real opportunity, our opportunity to work with him and get that student perspective. I know in the boardroom, I mentor Philip, but I'm also his chauffeur over to the East End. And he tends to be my mentor as we take those drives. And just learning firsthand from what our students have to offer is exactly why all of us are around this table. So, Madam Chair, it's a pleasure to run for the position of Vice Chair. And I commit to absolutely always keeping in mind, no matter which role I play, that students come first. And the fairness and equity in this boardroom is at 100%. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Johnstone, again, five minutes. And I will raise a finger about four minutes in to let you know we have one minute left. Thank you.
And thank you as well to my nominator. I have had the privilege to come to know all of you over the past three years as we have rabbled with many pressing and often difficult issues. Tonight, I ask for your support in seeking the position of Vice Chair. I became a trustee because I passionately believe in the value of public education. I strongly believe it is the best way to level playing field and give all children opportunities to succeed. I know this from personal experience. I myself was a special needs student who had the benefit of great teachers and support staff. That made a profound difference in my life and taught me firsthand how the right educational supports can change a child's trajectory. This experience inspired me to commit to ensuring all children get that support. It's why my life path has focused on working with children and advocating for their needs. My bachelor and master's degrees in social work centered on child welfare and child development. And while earning these degrees, I worked at a high needs high school, or school in Vancouver. All of these invaluable experiences have given me a greater understanding of the struggles, achievements, and potential of our students as I serve with all of you on this school board. I believe my commitment and experience would serve the board and community well if I were elected your Vice Chair. Over the past three years, I've sat on and chaired a wide variety of committees. My contributions have focused on language and processes to make them more inclusive and to make outcomes more equitable. My committee work includes three years on policy, rural schools, and the Special Education Advisory Committee; two years on SAL; and two years as Chair of the Human Resources Committee. In addition to my local responsibilities, I've served as OPSPA Director and Regional Representative on the OPSPA Policy Work Team for the past two years. In my community, in the community, I've also been a member of the Hamilton Roundtable for Poverty Reduction and Shifting Attitudes work group. I was thrilled to support the work of the board, the board undertook this past year to become Ontario's first elected body to declare ourselves a living wage employer. My committee work has given me a unique perspective into the local and provincial issues in education. As I look ahead, I believe my work as OPSPA Director and Chair of Human Resources during one of the most turbulent rounds of bargaining in recent history has prepared me well to assist the Board of Trustees in our next round of negotiations this spring. I believe the role of Vice Chair needs to be understood as it relates to supporting the Chair of the Board. When Chair in a standing committee, the Vice Chair needs to direct meetings fairly and impartially. As we move forward with our strategic directions and program strategy, it's important to have a Vice Chair who will advance our committee work so that student needs are being met in a timely manner. As I said at the onset, I have valued working with you over the past three years. Despite some of the challenging times, we gained guided important decisions and worked together as a team for the betterment of our community. It is in this spirit that I will work with you on your behalf as Vice Chair. I thank you very much for your consideration.
Just in terms of the nomination, and for both of the trustees, you are entitled. And I'm going to ask if you would like to have a scrutineer. You would like, we already have two people, I'm just saying, the one that you would like, and that would be additional. Todd is saying no, sorry, trustee White is saying no. And, no, thank you, sorry. I wasn't very clear, and I appreciate that you figured my name. Thank you. Yes, that's right, thank you. So, we are dealing with high technology, as you know, in terms of getting the ballot out. So, I just ask you for a little patience. I know. Just, thank you, trustee Peddle. Just in terms of the information for the rest of the trustees. Trustee Peddle will email her secret ballot, if you will, and that will go to our Officer of Trustee Services, Heather Miller. Sorry. We are not receiving any special instructions on how to fold ballot?
Multiple times.
You're trying to stay away from origami visions? I don't think don't hit in small. Maybe a small. It is an ordinary trustee that was able to support me by figuring out how to work the clock.
Just not helping her out, trustee.
Mind you, I had to scrutineer.
I figured out this name place with a receipt number.
Your name, it should be on the witness protection program.
Whatever happened to the two months I was on my locker door? Those taken, I don't know. Those taken, you must have taken them.
Our new Vice, our new Vice Chair of the Board is trustee Todd White. You're at work already. Bring your handbag and all your luggage, and those two cookies I know you've hidden.
And Philip.
I will have an opportunity a little later, but I do want to offer my congratulations to trustee White. And my sincere thanks and appreciation and congratulations to trustee Johnstone for putting her name forward. Okay, now we get to the real business of the night, which is to determine amongst ourselves who is going to be on what committee and how we best do it. So, the first grouping will be appointments to the board mandated committees. And the mandated committees are essentially committees created by legislation or are structurally integral to the governance of the board. We will, at the end of this, we will seek one motion to appoint trustees to the mandated committees. But we'll go one by one as we go through them. The Standing Committee is essentially the committee that will take place later on this evening. And that is a committee that is mandated by our Board. And all trustees are expected to be on it. You may wish not to be on it, but we will still expect you to be here once a month when the Standing Committee occurs. The appeal hearings for suspensions and expulsions, this is a new responsibility to us, a relatively new responsibility for us as trustees, at least three, four years old, where all of us, more trustees, are expected to share the duties and the scheduling so that we can create panels of three trustees a couple of times a month to hear issues regarding any disciplinary action with students. So, the only trustees who would not be on that are, of course, the student trustees, because that would be so awkward, wouldn't it? But it would also not be allowed by legislation. The Audit Committee is a committee, again, mandated and relatively new. We have, we're in the third year of our four-year mandate as an Audit Committee. And I wonder if I could go to the current Chair of the Audit Committee. Just to remind you, two of us were elected four years ago, excuse me, three years ago to the Audit Committee. And because we're staying on, we do not need to be re-selected or re-elected or in any way installed into the committee. But trustee Peddle is stepping back from the committee, and therefore, there will be an opening. Did you want to speak to this trustee Thurston?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, as much as we all love audit, we have had discussions at audit about... we have had discussions at audit about how we need to do some capacity building. Because it's a four-year term, we did have trustee Peddell and then we had trustee Barlow, then we had trustee Hicks and then back to trustee Peddell as the third member of the audit committee. Trustee Brennan and I have been there for three of the four years. So it's quite important, the committee felt it was quite important, for someone to step back. And I want to thank trustee Peddell for actually giving up her spot on audit. She is such a valuable member of that committee. She has enormous breadth and experience in that. But she said she would step back in order for somebody to actually come forward for the longevity of the audit committee and to capacity build and do some learning. So we do have one position open for the audit committee for the last year. And ideally, it would be someone who has intentions to run in the next election and, of course, hopefully win. So we are looking at for some sustainability in audit. We have two external members, one of whom is staying on for the extra year and one of whom has decided that her three years is up. So we are doing a little bit of transformation there. So if someone has some aspirations to learn about audit, then we'll be training for any of the members in the early spring or late winter.
Thank you for explaining that to trustee Turkstra, yes?
And sorry to interrupt, Madam Chair. Audit committee only meets four times per year. And it's usually on, right now it's on a Thursday afternoon from 3 till 5, a back change depending on group. And a very informative and, I would say, capacity building position for the organization.
Our thanks to trustee Peddell for stepping in and filling that third spot as we needed it. Thank you trustee Peddell.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And do we have someone interested in being on the audit committee? Thank you very much. We have trustee White who's interested. Do we have anyone else who's interested in the audit committee? Seeing none, I believe you're now on the audit committee. Thank you very much. Health and safety committee is a very large committee. I believe it meets once a month. We always have a member of the board representing the rest of us on that committee. Do I have someone who is interested in being on health and safety? Thank you, Tim. Anyone else who's interested? Thank you, Tim. Happy that you're going to be on health and safety committee again. You worked on it this past year as chair of the board, or the past two years. So you two are getting to be a veteran at health and safety committee. Very well done. Thank you very much. Parent involvement committee is also a mandated committee. And this is one where, I think we've had various different numbers for who's on the board, sorry, who's on the committee. I believe it is...
One is mandatory, up to three per local terms of reference.
So one is mandatory and then we have up to three according to our governance rules. So who is interested in being on the parent involvement committee? Todd? Shirley? We do have space up to three if there's someone else who wishes to be on it. Okay, seeing none, then Todd White and Shirley will be our representatives to the parental involvement committee. Thank you both. Supervised alternative learning is, again, a mandated committee. We have had, I think, three this past, maybe even four this past year, sharing the duties. It is usually once a month, twice a month. Hope I didn't miss any committee meetings. But I do want to invite people who are interested to let us know that you're interested in being on the supervised alternative learning. Judith Bishop, trustee Turkstra and Shirley Glaser. Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much. That's, those are the three we have on supervised alternative learning. And then we have the special education advisory committee, another mandated committee. And do we not see Alex Johnstone's hand and Judith Bishop as well? We're only entitled to two, is that correct? We are only entitled to two and Alex and Judith have both been on that committee for some time. So I really appreciate that they're willing to come forward again. So if I could have one motion to appoint the trustees to the board mandated committees. Yes, trustee Turkstra. Do I have a second here? Trustee Hicks. All those in favor?
In favor?
Thank you. That is unanimous. And thank you to all the trustees who have put their names forward for those committees. We're now moving to the board subcommittees or special committees. And these are, for the most part, committees that are made up of trustees only with staff involvement in terms of processing through the work that the trustees do. So we have the finance advisory committee. And who is interested in that? We have Judith Bishop, we have Wes Hicks, Lillian Orban, Todd White and Karen Turkstra. And I believe we're only entitled to five, but having said that, if someone else was interested, we would have to have an election. Okay? Okay. So Judith Bishop, trustee Hicks, trustee Bishop, my apologies, being so familiar, Judith, sorry, being familiar again. Trustee Bishop, trustee Hicks, trustee Orban, trustee White and trustee Turkstra. Thank you all. Governance committee. Now, the governance committee is to deal primarily with the governance of the board of trustees, the relationship between the board trustees and the director and staff and some other matters that are equally important. But it is prescribed as to who, in fact, is on this committee. It is the chair of the board, it is the vice chair of the board and I believe the past chair of the board is invited to be on the committee if they so desire. So with that, trustee Simmons. And that leaves us two openings on governance. We have Judith Bishop and Alex Johnstone, trustee Johnstone and trustee Lillian Orban. Do we have any other persons interested in being on that committee? We therefore will have a vote to select two people for the spots out of the three. Is that fair? People would choose two out of three? Okay, on the same ballot?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. He's already telling me how to make this work. I like that about a vice chair. That's great. In campaign language, you are not allowed to plump. That means you can't put the same person's name down twice. They have to be two different names. Out of the three. Thank you very much. Just to be clear, you are voting for two out of the three people who presented themselves for consideration. And you are requested to vote for two and to vote for two different ones out of the three. Yes. Trustee Turkstra, yes?
Point of clarification.
Yes.
Are the people that we get to choose from, does that include the former chair of the board?
No.
Okay.
I'm sorry, thank you for that.
Yes.
There are three people who have put their names forward for the two spots available. The two spots available are not any of the elected positions or a previously elected position. And the three people who are putting their names forward, let's see if I can do it in alphabetical order, are trustee Bishop, trustee Johnstone and trustee Orban. Waiting for the high-level technology to kick in so that we have our ballots. The two other members of governance are Judith Bishop and Alex Johnstone. Thank you. And my appreciation to trustee Orban again for her willingness and eagerness to promote the committee and for the service that she has given us in the past. Thank you. We are now moving to the human resources advisory committee. And again, is this three to five? Yeah. So this is a minimum of three people on the committee and up to five as a maximum. So those who have interest, trustee Simmons, trustee Johnstone, trustee Hicks and trustee Brennan will put her name forward on that one as well. We have room for one more person on that committee. Seeing no other interest, we will, trustee Simmons, trustee Johnstone, trustee Hicks and myself will be the human resources advisory committee. Policy working committee. There are those who think this is the only committee on the board that it does all the heavy lifting. Yes. I have Judith Bishop, I have Shirley Glaser, I have Todd White. Do I have any other members of the board interested at the moment committee?
Trustee Peddell.
Trustee Peddell?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm being encouraged to consider going on. I think I've been on policy for 12 years. I've only been a trustee for 10, but I'm very happy to come on policy again. Thank you all very much. So our committee at the moment, unless I see any other interest, is Judith Bishop, trustee Bishop, trustee Glaser, trustee White, trustee Peddell and trustee Brennan. Thank you all. Student trustee mentor. Those of you are aware that often this role can be sought after by any trustee, but it is often the vice chair of the board who is the student trustee mentor. So I just want to, just in terms of our attempt at this and some of our previous action, I have already, knowing that I was going to be moving forward to seek your support for chair this evening, I've already talked to the student trustees just to make them aware of that possibility. They essentially said they don't want me anymore. So, let me at least put it out to see if anybody else is interested in being student trustee mentor. Okay? Okay? Just... Okay, thank you. I just wanted some clarification on that. We can have an election for this position. It is one student trustee mentor. I'm stepping back from student trustee mentor. So we can have an election, and I believe our rules allow us to do that. We don't give you all. Yeah?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll find my mic. It's behind the water here. Anyways, just, I mean, our trustee is interested in the position. I am not interested in challenging that, but is there clarity just on that? We're not electing our table members right now. We're electing the trustee. So this is in the first place, beside the trustee? Okay, so clarity on that. So I would have no interest in challenging that.
Okay, thank you for that. Trustee Johnstone? Okay, terrific. So we then have the new student trustee mentor is Trustee Johnstone. Thank you very much. I would accept the motion to appoint the trustees as so mentioned above to the board's special committees. Trustee Glauzer, do I have a second there? Trustee Orban, all those in favor?
In favor.
Thank you, Trustee Peddell, and that is unanimous. Thank you again. We're now moving to the appointments to liaison representatives to associated agencies. The city school board liaison committee is made up of the chair and two others. So we need to see what the interest is in from two others. I see Trustee Bishop, Trustee Hicks, and Trustee White. Are there any other interests? Okay, we then, again, we are seeking two people from the three who have asked for your consideration. Judith?
Rather than causing an election, I will withdraw.
Thank you, Trustee Bishop. We therefore have Trustee Hicks and Trustee White on the committee. With my personal thanks and on behalf of the rest of the board, our thanks to you, Trustee Bishop, for the work that you've done in this committee all these years. Thank you. The next is a community advisory committee. This is our representative from the board of trustees to that committee. That's the First Nations Métis and Inuit Community Advisory Committee. And we are entitled to two. Judith Bishop is one. Do we have a second person? Lillian Orban. And we are entitled to two, so there's no need for an election if both trustees wish to serve. Okay, not seeing any other person putting their name forward. Thank you to Trustee Orban and thank you to Trustee Bishop to be our representatives on the First Nations Métis and Inuit Community Advisory Committee. We have the French Emergent Community Advisory Committee. And again, we are entitled up to two. Trustee White is showing interest. Okay, not seeing any others. Thank you to Trustee White. The Hamilton-Wenworth Home and School Association. So on the Hamilton-Wenworth Home and School Association, our notations are that it is the vice chair who is the liaison?
Although it hasn't been for three years, so.
Okay, I think we have a bit of a negotiation going on. Trustee Simmons, is that you would like to stand?
I would, but I would give it to the vice chair for the first break.
Trustee White?
I'm happy if Tim would like to do what I'm always carrying on. Maybe the law over, I've been very frankly, I've taken it from people who are called leaders while you're vice chair, so we'll call it even.
I believe we just had a virtual wrestling match. Thank you all very much. Trustee Simmons is now going to be our representative to the Hamilton-Wenworth Home and School Association. We have Ontario Public School Boards Association. And the person who would be our representative to that is also a director on that board. Do we have interest? Trustee Johnstone. We also have gotten ourselves into some difficulty before. That is wonderful that Trustee Johnstone wants to be the director. That's great. But we do need an alternative. Thank you. Trustee Simmons. We have tried to go without an alternative and OSPHA has been mad at us. So now we have, we are in compliance with the number of directors, the director and the alternate. Thank you very much. Rural Schools Community Advisory Committee is typically the trustees who are in fact have rural schools, even though that isn't in our terms of reference. Maybe we need to be more specific sometime in the future. But that would be Trustee Terkstra and Trustee Johnstone. Thank you very much. The Umbrella Board of Family and Childcare Centers. Judith Bishop. Lillian Orban. And we are entitled to two, so thank you both for putting your names forward. Any other interests? Okay? And then the Ontario Student Trustee Association, we are extremely well represented with our student trustee Philip Suzick and student trustee Carly Van Hagen. And they are also on some committees there. And I had asked them if they would at least let the rest of us know what they're doing on some of their committees. Just tell us what committees you're on.
At the moment, for OSTA ACO, I currently sit as the public board council communications officer, and I am also on the policy committee.
Thank you. And Carly?
At OSTA ACO, I am the co-chair of the Student Voice Awards Committee.
Thank you very much. Wonderful to see that bit of our history of active student trustees from our board being active at OSTA is still carrying on. Congratulations to both of you for your service there. So I do need a motion for the appointment of trustees as the liaisons representatives to the associated agencies. Trustee Simmons, thank you. Do I have a second there? Trustee Terkstra. All those in favor?
In favor.
Thank you, Trustee Peddell. All is carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you all very much for your service to this community and for stepping up on various committees and associated agencies that we need to be represented by someone. And I appreciate all of you taking your own leadership into that. Very pleased then to welcome Mr. Pat Daly, who is the chair of our co-terminist board, the Hamilton-Wenworth Catholic District School Board, who is with us here tonight, and looking forward to receiving your greetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Trustees, Mr. Director, staff and guests. It's my real pleasure to bring warm words of greetings to all of you from the trustees of the Hamilton-Wenworth Catholic District School Board. And at the outset, I want to congratulate you, Madam Chair, on the election. I've had the privilege of working with you a few years ago and enjoyed it a great deal and know that we will continue with that good working relationship. As well, I want to congratulate Todd White on his election as vice chair. And I want to, in a special way, thank your past chair, Tim Simmons. I really appreciated and enjoyed working with Tim. I think that on behalf of both of our boards, we've made a great deal of progress in the transportation consortia, in other areas. And I always found him to be a person of integrity and one that stood up for the interests of your system, but as well respected the needs of ours. I as well want to commend your staff. I know seeing how hard the directors, superintendents, and other officials of our board work, that this is indeed a time of great challenge for them, and I do want to just commend them for that. Trustee White, your new vice chair, used the word exciting, I think, to describe the role or the environment of trustees. That's one I probably would have used, but there are others as well that I would have added to that. The one thing I will clearly say is there's no doubt in my mind that at this moment, in the history of publicly funded Catholic education, there's never been more of a need for people who will stand up for and defend the law of locally elected trustees. And I commend each of you for that. Perhaps our systems have different missions, but I know we share a commitment to locally elected trustees and as well a commitment for the best interest of students in our system. So I thank all of you for that, and I pledge to you our continued spirit of cooperation and willingness to work in the best interest of both our systems. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Daly. Thank you so much for bringing attention to the good work of our previous chair, Tim Simmons, and for the relationship that you have had with him and with our board and the work that you've had to do together. Thank you again for attending this meeting. I think it's important for us to remember the partnerships we have in our community, and it is wonderful that year after year, we find an opportunity, at least at these ceremonial times, to acknowledge each other and congratulate each other. The relationship with the Hamilton-Wenworth Catholic District School Board, of course, some of us may focus on the transportation consortia, but I think very much what Pat has just sent to us about the commonality of the work that we do together for students in our communities, that we are locally elected, that no one understands the trustee role as well as another trustee, so totally understand our responsibility together. And although separate mandates, still working towards educating our students in the Hamilton-Wenworth area. So thank you very much for being with us. I want to thank Ray for his nomination of me and for pointing out the things that really matter to us, that we share in common, and that's the strength of publicly funded education and the important work that we do together. Ray was my first chair when I arrived as trustee, and I thought as we move forward to new work this year, that it was only appropriate to ask a former chair to nominate me. I want to congratulate Todd White as our new vice chair. His experience in terms of committee work and procedural and governance pieces, his understanding of the community are very important. And in his other role, with his other hat on, he has a provincial perspective that will serve us well, as it does with so many of our other trustees around this table. Congratulations again to Trustee Johnstone for putting her name forward. I think it's very wonderful to know that leadership is in each and every one of us, and there is an opportunity to express that and for us to continue to honor that. So thank you so very much. But there's leadership around this entire table, and I know that because I was vice chair to Chair Bishop. I was chair to vice chair, Tim Simmons. And the granddad of them all, Chair Mahalat, was here before us. And as we know, will be here long after the rest of us are gone. But we also have other leadership around this table. We have Trustee Orban and Trustee Hicks, who have both been vice chairs. We have a number of people who've been committee chairs, Todd and Alex, Karen and Judith at the moment, but also previously Laura, Wes, Lillian, and Shirley. I think even Tim was in committee or two as chair. We also have leadership with Carly and Philip, who are not only representing us at the OSTA, but are co-chairs of the student senate. And through the work that they do together, have to bring our high school representatives, our senators, work through meetings and discussions, and that's leadership as well. And I'm very proud of the work that they're doing and extremely pleased that that's another experience of leadership here. And then around this table, people are leaders in their own agencies, organizations, associations, in the work that they do. And so you understand the responsibilities, but you also know what accounts for accountability from leadership, and you do have great expectations. As chair, I want to serve the board of trustees as a collective, as a collectivity, but also as individuals, so that we as a group can serve our community of communities and ensure excellent programming, wonderful learning environments for our students. And by serving the board of trustees, I mean very specifically. You all know I'm a recovering librarian. Making sure we get you the information, guiding the processes for decision-making, so that ultimately we as a group can make reasoned decisions that deal with the equitable and fair way to use our considerable but limited resources. We have to listen to and understand our students, our parents, and our staff. We have to explain decisions we have made and why and what are the implications for their children, our students. And as spokesperson of the board, that will often be my job. Communication at a very fundamental basis is face-to-face. But face-to-face could be FaceTime, it could be Skype, it could be on the cellphone, it could be Twitter, it could be through Joey's recordings of our events. And every mechanism that we need to use as a group, and I need to use as a chair, to communicate with our community and to understand what they're saying to us is really important. We are here to advocate for and to serve our students, to prepare them for the world that is and for the one that is just around the corner. We need to acknowledge their passions and guide them to their full and great potential. We must do it in respectful and collaborative partnership with the community, other school boards, other educational institutions, and other agencies. And we must do that work as a board of trustees through the work of our senior staff and the leadership of our director. And when we disagree, to be sure that we express our disagreement and look for solutions that will still be student-focused. That is the most important piece. But we still also must acknowledge that certain communities have been But we still also must acknowledge that certain communities have been historically left out, and we must find ways to equip them, to advocate for themselves, even as they may do so against the Board. That's the problem with public education, everyone becomes articulate and can express themselves. And we have to go out and seek those opinions and bring them in, but most likely, those people are already with us, and we can find them amongst us. We just have to welcome them and their ideas and engage them in meaningful and brave conversations. So as trustees, we must be student-focused, we must do our work mindfully and with intent, with respect for each other, recognizing the great privilege each and every one of us has in serving the students of this community and the incredible responsibility we share together in serving them well. I look forward to you telling me what to do and how to do it. Thank you. Thank you very much. I then would welcome our Director.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As we begin this work of another year, it's always connected to the work of the past. So I too would like to begin by saying that I have very much appreciated working very closely with trustee Simmons as our former Chair. I've also appreciated the work with trustee Barlow, who was, as you know, our former Vice Chair, and of course you, Chair Brennan, who was Vice Chair as well. The work that needs to happen, I believe, going forward very much rests on the foundation of what has happened. And I also want to say that when trustee Simmons announced that he wasn't going to be standing again for Chair, some of my Director colleagues across the province called me and said, "John, you've been there shy five years, and you're going to move to your fourth Chair." So at least I can say that I'm returning to the Chair that I started with five years ago. And I'm grateful on behalf of Executive Council to be working again with you, Chair Brennan, and you, Vice Chair White. We look forward to working with the entire Board in the important work to come. I just would like to highlight a few points from the Executive Council's perspective because so often right now, and rightly so, our public is hearing so much about the changes that we've been experiencing and will continue to experience. But there are a few significant points that I'd like to underline about why working with you as our Board, I believe, is so significant and so effective. You have never wavered from the strategic focus of achievement, engagement, and equity, no matter what the distractions are, no matter what the challenges have been. Meeting with the Principals last week, they reminded us that this is our fifth year of staying the course in a very focused fashion. They thanked us for the opportunity to go deeper when it comes to how our students learn, the kind of engagement that builds the learning community, and the equity that will not rest until all students achieve and all students are well. That focus which Executive Council is able to communicate comes because this Board's direction has not wavered once. Secondly, you've provided us a door to enter an entirely unique world around 21st century learning. And when we use that term, too often people are misunderstanding what we mean. It's not so much about the technology. It's about creating a learning environment for each and every student, where each and every student is honored, respected, and celebrated for that which they bring into the classroom and how the technology and the digital resources support them. Through our wireless project, which you supported, through our elementary project starting in the Seven North Schools, which will expand across the Board, and now with the opportunity of our two new schools, South and North, where we're going to begin that movement in secondary schools. Once again, creativity abounds through your openness to a process that not everyone is comfortable because it's emerging, it's not clear, and we need to be pioneers in order to build that new world, and we thank you. Our program strategy, as challenging as it has been, connected to the significant work of the ARCs, which again is quite challenging, is taking us as a Board to serve our students in a very, very unique way. And yes, as the challenge is abound, it's easy sometimes to be pulled in too many different directions, but your direction to us, to commit to the significant transitions that are before us, to work with every question that emerges from our community, to wrestle with the challenges when opposing perspectives seem hard to reconcile, is something that, again, you clearly direct us to do. And we're committed as a staff to do that for our students. And yes, we do have an ideal around all schools being great schools, where choices are expanded, where diversity exists, and I do believe we will get there again with the solid leadership that you provide. Our early learning focus, front and center, our math work, absolutely necessary, the positive school climate work, which for the first time in our experience is bringing together mental health, equity and inclusion, and safe schools in a coherent fashion so that we are creating learning environments for all, where they will achieve and where they will be strong. None of this happens without the engagement, which frankly is about relationships. And I think you said it very well, Chair Brennan, in your opening remarks, that suggested that there will be disagreements, there will be challenges, there will be difficult times, but there will also be plenty of times to celebrate, and we've had many experiences of that in the last year and before, and I'm sure in the year to come. But with that commitment to engagement, it means that we won't step away from the hard conversations. We understand, as sometimes difficult as it is for our communities, to see us as the Board or as senior staff is connected to them, that is our commitment to do everything in our power to engage. My last remark is that we all know that change is so very difficult. Change is difficult because, as I wrote just today, and it's going out tomorrow, to all of our secondary staff, who are most affected right now, and our secondary students, who are wondering how this is going to work, and of course, our families. And yes, we have elementary transition as well, I don't want to forget that. Clearly, all of this transition is reminding me of a few things. People, all of us, love to be connected to the people we know, to the people we understand, and to the places of comfort. It's human, it's real, it's important. And when we make these kinds of changes that are happening in our Board, that can't stay the same. And we know that by listening and engaging, even when the message is challenging, we hope to build that trust again, where people understand that it's not a bureaucracy simply saying, "We have to do this now," but one that's trying to get to a new reality that hopefully our students will be better served. So I say that because this shift is not just about buildings, it's not just about progress. What we're coming to understand, at least in the work that Executive Council is doing, is that it's also very much about beliefs and understandings. And when we're speaking about those kinds of cultural realities, I would suggest that it becomes even that much more challenging to move through, but again, the opportunities are plenty. With your leadership this year, we as an Executive Council will continue to work with our staff to ensure that we are providing them with effective support, listening closely, and supporting the change. We will continue to work with our parents and communities, not just in those places that are most affected by transition, but throughout. And of course, we are excited to work with you, our Chair and Vice Chair, and this entire Board to continue to make all things wonderful, and happens in Wentworth District School Board, where all students achieve, because at the end of the day, we are only here because of our students. There is no other reason for us to spend any of the time that we spend unless it was for our students, and for that, we're very grateful, we're very excited, and we as Executive Council, on behalf of Executive Council, thank you for your leadership, for your support, and for all the ways that you provide the direction that allows us to, as I said, all students will achieve their full potential. Thank you.
I would welcome a motion to...
Yes. Just a quick word, Madam Chair. I see that we didn't appoint table mentors.
Oh, yes, thank you. Thank you for that. Normally, because the table mentorship is actually done at a different time of year, we were going to deal with it next week, and I believe there are people talking to people. Okay, so, my wonderful... Okay, thank you very much. I would now entertain a motion to adjourn with a 10-minute break before we start the next meeting. Yes, trustee Simmons, seconded by trustee Bishop. Yes, trustee Simmons, seconded by trustee Bishop.
Okay. Okay, thank you, everyone. We'll call to order the meeting of the Standing Committee on Monday, December 2nd. We're looking for approval of the agenda. By Carrion, seconded by Shirley, trustee Glauzer. Any comments, questions on the agenda? Just to note, there are two consent agenda items, A and B, that are there for information. All in favor of the agenda? That's unanimous. Well, as Madam Chair, are there any declarations of conflict of interest? That you're aware of? Everyone through the committee, are there any declarations of conflict of interest? Seeing none, we'll move to private session. Can we get a motion to move in private? Oh, trustee Glauzer.
I think you might want to know that...
Oh, yes, yes, thank you. Trustee thinks that a conflict is the evening, so he can send his regrets for this portion of the evening for Standing Committee. Thank you, trustee Glauzer. Okay, motion to move in Carrion. Moved by trustee Bishop, seconded by trustee Simmons, all in favor? That's unanimous.
No.
No? Oh, that's unanimous. Trustee Terzstra, trustee Orban, trustee Brennan in favor, yes. Trustee Glauzer, trustee Orban, trustee Brennan, trustee White, trustee Bishop, trustee Johnstone, soon trustees Ben Aitken, ah, there we go, trustee Susick, and trustee Simmons. All opposed? Oh, trustee Pell, all opposed? Trustee Mahollen. All right, that's, I don't know if it's passed or we can close the doors. Do we have a secondary? Trustee Terzstra, any questions on the finance report? Trustee Orban?
I just have one question, and I shouldn't be asking it today, I'll find out. But when it comes to the modernization consultation, I think sometimes we forget about the building itself.
Is your mic on, trustee Orban?
Sorry. My, my question is, with regard to the modernization consultation, we, we talk about this, but we don't talk about the building and design that much. And I think we did briefly say we're going to. So my question to the chair is, when are we going to get the big picture of some of our new secondary schools that are going to last us for the next 40 years? How are they going to look at trying to supplement student learning and the environment itself?
Mr. Director. Through you, Mr. Chair. The plan is that the architect that has been hired to provide leadership around design will be here, meeting with the board in January at the information session to provide insight in terms of how buildings should be considered from that person's perspective, to listen to what our board would like to be considered for that. And then, our plan is that the buildings going forward will meet the needs of the changing learning environment that I spoke about earlier this evening.
Thank you, trustee Orban. Any further questions? Trustee Terzstra.
So, to that information session, is that the four option sheets go out?
Mr. Director.
Through you, Mr. Chair. The option sheets will be going out in January, but the work of the architect and the work of this board influences is actually for a few years down the road in that we are going to be beginning to implement some aspects of the program strategy over the next two years between now and 2016. But for the most part, the option sheet process won't have a direct connection to this important building and architect work in January, which is focusing on the two buildings that will be here for us in September of 2016.
Thank you. Further questions?
Just a comment that it's nice to see the future. When you're filling out your option sheet.
Perfect. Thank you. Any further questions on the finance report? Seeing none, all in favor? That is unanimous. The major item number nine, Governance Committee Report from November 19th. For the Chair of Governance, trustee Brennan.
Yes, oops. Yes, Mr. Chair. The main issue for the Board of Trustees coming out of governance is the Governance Statement and Procedure Regarding Electronic Participation. I just want to give a context for this. We, we have been operating in terms of accommodating any trustee who could not be physically in the room but was able to participate electronically, more or less through a procedural email that the Chair of the Board put together at the time. And we, as a group of governance, had been looking at what was the legislation primarily? What are we obligated to do under the legislation? And then we also looked at other boards and how they manage it. Some of you may be aware of boards, particularly at the North, where meetings do not occur unless they are electronic because there are days of travel for one trustee in particular for. So, so the main point I want to make is that this is, we are obligated to provide this for trustees under the legislation. This always, well, it existed previous to anybody individually requesting it. What we've done here is keep it as much to the legislation as possible and with some reiteration of the legislation, just so that it would be clear to us as a Board of Trustees. Some of the times, it may make sense not to have anything because the legislation says it, but then it forces individual trustees, as well as the members of the public, to go into the big, huge home called the Education Act and try and find the information that they need. So, what we've put together here is a statement, and this will be what we will see in the future, the Governance Statement, and then a procedure on how we will implement the intention of the statement. You'll notice in the motion coming from the committee that it says Governance Statement 2C and Procedure 3H. Both of those designations are lost off of 9-2 and 9-4, in case you saw that. And there are a couple of tabulation challenges on 9-2. But other than those formatting issues, I present the Governance Statement and Procedure for your consideration.
So, are you moving your reports?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Do we have a secondary? Do we have a secondary? Trustee Bishop, questions? I think we got trustee Terzstra.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On 9-3, maybe I could get some clarification on, it talks about the Chair of the Board or the Chair of the Board Committee. They refuse to provide member of the finance and participation in a meeting of a board, meeting of a board committee, where to do so is necessary to ensure compliance. And then on number G, it talks about trustee shall be physically present in a meeting for at least three regular meetings. Are they talking about just a board meetings or board committee meetings? Because we have some board committees that only meet four times a year or two times a year. So, is that just the, the regular board meeting?
Yeah, we do have an answer for that. I believe the Director informed the committee, Mr. Director.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, the Education Act is clear that we're speaking about the board meeting and not all of the related meetings in that particular clause.
And then to the answer, the question you have for the first statement on the top of 9-3, I'm not sure if the Chair wanted to answer, but I believe that's in reference to the table from the previous page. So it's compliance with that table, with my understanding. Any further questions on the Governance Report? Trustee Orban?
Unless, unless the Director has a response to you on that.
I'm sorry, trustee Orban.
Okay, that's fine. Yes, my, my concern is the difference between attendance, absences, and participation. Like, if we go with this mandate of the government that we are allowed to participate electronically wherever we are in the world, because physically, we only have to be present three board meetings, not special board, but regular board meeting, what my concern is, a trustee could be double dipping in terms of having a job elsewhere, and when it comes to two or three hours, they phone in and participate, but are absent, because, but they are absent physically. So how do you monitor that? And at what point you say, how many meetings can a trustee come in and feel electronically with board concern? I have a concern of that because I think the community would like to see that important interaction at the table, as our Chair mentioned in her speech about one-on-one and talking together and engaged. So, it bothers me that this legislation here now gives all kind of leeway to trustees not to attend. So, in other words, they're participating, but they're absent. So how do we afford that? And at what point does this board say enough is enough?
So, to answer that question, we'll look to the Director in terms of legislation. But just to clarify, the legislation is what describes this document. So, in terms of, through a minimum of three meetings, that's what the Education Act says. And quite frankly, we don't have the ability to increase that or ensure that trustees cannot participate electronically in terms of a quantity. But I'll just look to the Director for... But I'll just look to the director for clarification on the legislation.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I think you actually stated the legislation clearly.
Perfect, thank you. Trustee Orville?
Well, I know what the legislation says through the chair to the director, but I wonder if my concerns have been addressed? Because I know of the people out there, the constituents who vote, this new way of doing things electronically is fine, but what if it's being abused?
Are you, I think-
No, no, to me, it's significant because here at this board, there are so many clarifications and et cetera. And how do we record who speaks when there are two or three people calling in electronically? So my question really pertains to the effect of inefficiency of our job around this board, which we are elected to do, and to be present for our constituents. I do like that clarification on that.
Okay, looking to the director, Mr. Director.
Through you, Mr. Chair. The, the legislation is quite brief to say, a board shall have a policy, a trustee shall not miss three meetings. And the legislation is silent on everything else. So as an elective official, it wouldn't be this board who'd have any further comment. It would be the people these, this board serves, I would imagine. But all I can speak to is the legislation, which has those two clauses, and that's all.
Thank you, trustee Orville.
Well, okay, I'll, I'll just finish with this. I think this is a question that the electorate may ask a trustee. Are you planning on being present or electronically absent because you're participating, but you're not present? I think that's very important because I do appreciate comments around the table and rationale that is given by trustees. So, as, see, this, to me, through the chair, to the director, this started with the northern areas of this province, that they were so far out of reach that they had to communicate to conference calling or electronically. But then we all got a little bit jealous and we wanted to do it in our city area. So I think it's more of a, of an approach where you think of distances and rural areas in the north.
Thank you, trustee Orville. For questions, comments, debate? Seeing none, we have the report moved, all in favor? That is carried unanimously. Moving to item number 10, which is the policy committee report from November 12th, I'm going to hand the chair over to trustee Brennan.
Yes, the policy, the policy committee report from November 21st, 2013. I will now call on the policy committee chair. Yes, trustee White.
Thank you, trustee Brennan. So in front of you, for item number 10, you'll see three action items. We do have, we are bringing to you today a scoping report for the transportation policy. We did receive a lot of feedback on the transportation policy, and we did discuss it at numerous policy meetings, trying to incorporate all of the comments that we've heard and from our experiences as trustees. So we hope that we've captured the main content of the policy in the scoping report. Mind you, you will notice some content missing, and that's because some of it is in the future directives as well as the operational pieces at the transportation consortium. So if, if you have an item that you may not see there, it could show up at a later date when we actually see a draft policy. Item number two is our boundary review policy directive. If you recall, last month, we approved the scoping report. The committee saw the updated boundary review policy we have in front of you for approval. Sorry, we have in front of you to approve to go to consultation. And our third item that we have in front of you today is the naming/renaming a school policy. This is just a minor tweak. We did learn from a recent naming/renaming process in Dundas that would have been helpful if we could have adjusted the membership of the committee, just based on local circumstances, not to favor anyone, but in fact, the other way around to ensure that it's equitable. So it gives a little bit of discretion by adding the line you see in the report in order to allow administration to alter the membership. And then in terms of information items, or further information, but other discussions, we did finally see our parent engagement policy and our committee engagement policies. The committee was quite pleased with them. However, we did ask that our change be reported back to us in January. So that, and chair, I'm happy to move that report.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, trustee White. Do I have a second? Trustee Glaser, next? Comments? Yes, trustee Orville?
My question is to you regarding to boundary review. Now, I'm not sure whether I understand what this really means. Up until now, when it came to changing boundaries and so forth, this board has used the option that we'll fill schools, we'll change the boundary here, and then we'll fill schools because it needs to be filled. And you know what happened with regard to us coming out of here. Having said that, the other part I have some problems with. So when it comes to transportation, well, we'll, we'll move the boundary so that people in this area won't have to pay transportation costs, but we only give them free transportation. And that happened one year as well with this board. So my question is, this boundary review, is it for, I gather it's for all of us, but I never thought that we would be going that way when it used to be a decision of the board or the, so we say a system. So what are we doing here? I don't want to answer my question so, I wonder, an example of school in my area. They think, well, I need more transportation for my child because I'm a single parent, as I was called, willing, and I don't want to walk my kid to school. So what we do is we say we want a boundary review, we'll increase the transportation mileage, and therefore, my kid will get transportation to that school.
Okay, trustee White?
So speaking to the question, how it relates to the policy, one of the topics that will be discussed by the advisory panel to the superintendent are transportation impacts. So how that would impact the cost of further transportation or the walking distances for students, for instance, all of that is a topic for discussion. Ultimately, the superintendent will report to the board on any changes, and then that would be a separate policy that would technically govern transportation. But nonetheless, this process does evaluate the impacts of transportation.
It does, but you see where I'm coming from. And there are a few, especially with the French and the English schools, not in the schools, but the dual track. So this parent, and I, by the way, I meant here, I did agree with the parent, with a single parent, three, thirteen-month-old child and an older, older child. So for this parent to get that transportation mileage under her wing, why do we change the boundaries? So now it'll qualify. And we did that a few years ago at Middleland. So what I'm saying then, this now becomes another option of getting transportation for my child. We know what the trustee is saying, and we do have transportation policy. So what does that really mean now?
Yes, trustee White?
Yeah, I think, I think the question could be answered, I'm not sure if I looked to the director or to the facilities officer, but in terms of the intent, when boundary view is actually, when we actually seek to do a boundary view and why we choose to do that, that might answer the question on, on whether it's to do transportation or-
Thank you for-
Thank you for chairing this part of the meeting. And trustee White?
Through you, Madam Chair. I, I do know some of the historical concerns that the trustee is speaking of. I can, I can't speak to those if they happened prior to my being here, but I will say now, what our staff perspective would be, is when we are engaged sometimes in an ARC process, that is one place where boundaries may need to be adjusted. There are also times outside of an ARC process whereby we may be in a position where a school is growing too large and we have available space in a nearby school that we might need to make that adjustment. The transportation part of this process is where our intention, even though that policy is being reviewed, is to fulfill the mandate that if you're between 3.2 or 1.6 or what have you, when the boundary process is finished, that you would be provided transportation. But there are times when exceptions are made, but we try to do so because there's an administrative clause in the policy that for certain circumstances, albeit exceptional, we could potentially move away from that, but we don't try to do that often so that there's an equitable interpretation of the policy.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other comments or questions regarding the report? Oh, yes, I'm sorry, trustee Turster. Thank you. Repeating patient.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So my question on 10A-2, the actual title of it is scoping report for the transportation policy. It's missing in this report. And if you look at 10A-4, when it talks about, you know, the purpose and the guiding principles, I was surprised, I guess, to not see about the time limit that a, that a child would be on the bus, especially a time limit on the bus that's given their age. Now, we are transporting very, very young children, so there is nothing in that document about the time.
Good. Yes, I'll go to the chair of the committee. Trustee White?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This was a discussion at the committee, and I know a couple of the committee members looked at each other and said, do we discuss that? And we did. In terms of the purpose, we did mention that students would be arriving on time. In terms of the current policy, it does take 50 minutes, I believe, 60? Yes, that's right. The intent, and perhaps I would look at the superintendent through the director, I believe the intent's to have it remain at 60. So that shouldn't be lost, it may not exclusively, we didn't repeat everything that was in the current policy, but the intent was to maintain that, perhaps the director may not be able to keep rate.
Through you, Madam Chair. The chair of policies was quite clear in saying that there, there is a need for some change in the transportation policy to reflect the work of the program strategy. This scoping report is getting at those particular changes. Already agreed upon policy directions are not planning to be changed. And certainly, when trustees see it, the 60 minutes would still be there once we get to the place where you're actually seeing the entire policy again. Unless this board has the intention to change that, which of course, you always have the right to do. Certainly, staff is not planning to bring anything forward, that's different.
So I think that, you know, just so you know, that through the ARC process, that might, that 60 minutes, it might be part of the recommendation that's going to be for trustees to reconsider. So it just wasn't in this document, so it's very important to the people in the rural areas that we discuss a reasonable time that young children are on the bus. So just need that to be in the scoping report. The other thing that I wanted to mention is for the boundary review, on 10B-2, when it talks about action required, the first bullet talks about it's initiated through the long-term facilities master plan. Well, that's true, but it's also initiated through post-Arc recommendations. And community requests through the superintendent.
Thank you, trustee Turster. We're just trying to figure out where the information might be. Thank you.
I just, I still see it as a new board.
Yeah. I'm going to ask trustee White to explain.
Yeah, so this was, this was a late addition. You're absolutely right. So we did add, if you look, both of those two bolts, it's a boundary review, the side of the accommodation review process shall be in under the following circumstances. So the consideration that the committee had was that when a recommendation like that comes out of a boundary review, it's part of that process. So that's why it's excluded. But once again, it would fall within that scope of an accommodation review.
So I guess to that, then, where would a boundary, does a boundary review belong in the ARC policy and vice versa? Because they definitely go together.
I believe the director would like to comment on that.
Through you, Mr. Madam Chair. The, the staff perspective is that there's a belief in our communities that boundary reviews, there's a belief in some of our communities that boundary reviews only happen when there is an ARC. And the concern of staff, when we've heard some of that, is that is one very major way that boundaries are reviewed and changed, but the other two items there would provide the opportunity to ensure that we weren't missing anything. In terms of what may need to go in the ARC policy around that, there is a connection. But through you, Madam Chair, if I may, and I'm looking towards our officer, is there any reference to boundary reviews, if you will allow, Madam Chair, already there, through the officer, through the chair, to them, I should say? Through you, Madam Chair. In the accommodation review policy, which is, I believe, what we're discussing right now, it just identifies accommodation recommendations, and the accommodation recommendations is an all-accomplishing. It, it is a catch-all to suggest both facility accommodations, enrollment accommodations. It, it's, it's all captured under the accommodation options.
Okay, so I just want to, I guess, challenge that a bit, that when we're in an ARC, we're looking at an exterior boundary, and there are attachments within that. We cannot, an ARC right now can't say, well, we want to change that exterior boundary. That's a process that is struck after the ARC. Is that not correct? Through you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Director is that correct?
Through you, Madam Chair. I would like the officer to speak specifically to that, please.
Thank you.
Through you, Madam Chair. Just to clarify, any schools that are identified to be part of the accommodation review process, committee as well as the board has the ability to amend those, those boundaries within, that grouping of schools?
That's interesting. Yes.
And through you, Madam Chair, just to, to add to that, I think I'm understanding that the trustee's question is, it is the requirement that the committee provides their insight to what the boundary should be? What I think the trustee might be suggesting, and please clarify if not, is there may be a school for which that committee wishes to comment about its boundary. In other words, it's outside of the boundary of the five schools involved, and what process then takes place? We had that last year or the year before, when one of the schools that incorporated King George wasn't part of the ARC. And then at that time, after the ARC had finished, after the committee had recommended that there be a boundary change, then this board approved that process, and then we engaged in that boundary change. Through you, Madam Chair, is that closer to what the trustee's asking, or are we still missing the intention?
So I'm going to give an example. In an ARC-
Thank you.
We have, I'll give the one that I'm in. We have five schools in the review, and the committee started talking about including another school's boundary within our, our, our ARC. But our ARC only has this one area. And we had to say, that boundary is not under consideration for this ARC right now. So we feel in the ARC that we are looking at this area, and we can't look at the little arm at the top here that belongs to Balaklava or Queen's Rangers, anything that's outside of it. So that is- So that is what I understood from the officer's comment. Boundaries and catchments are two different things.
I believe the Chair of Policy would like to respond. Thank you.
It's hard to understand if that could be what trustee Turkster was saying. You speak my language. So to answer the question, so you're given your prescribed area, the boundary is in between all the schools. Those can be changed through the Accommodation Review Process. We know that. It doesn't have to go through the Accommodation Review Process. Now, when you're looking at the overall boundary around your catchment area of the entire ARC, the committee cannot change that. They can note in their report to trustees that we should look at that, but then it would be something that would come to us, and we would have to initiate that through board motion. So really, if a nexter bullet were to be provided here, it basically say board approval or recommendation from trustees. It would be a recommendation with an approval of trustees. So it wouldn't come from the Long-Term Facilities Master Plan. It wouldn't come from a superintendent. It would actually start in an ARC. We would approve it on the board, and then it would actually go through this process.
Mr. Director.
Sorry, that was my point, for adding post-Arc recommendations.
Yes.
Okay.
Through you, Madam Chair. Though I do want to confirm that the trustee's clarity that when an ARC committee is working, the expectation is that they spend their time working within that context to provide clear recommendations to this board. They may make mention of something that either the trustees ask us to follow, or the superintendents might say, board, this is a good idea, but it would be outside the scope of the ARC itself. So I wanted to confirm the very important message that trustee Turkster shared, which is the expectation is the term of reference of an ARC is asking that committee to work in that context.
Having said that, trustee Turkster did point out that there could be a post-Arc consequence that leads to this process and is recommending that there be some extra bullet. I believe the Chair of the Committee is favorable to that. What would be the process? I guess just to move an amendment. Okay?
So an amendment, I'd like to move, Madam Chair, and I think this captures the intent. So the nexter bullet says a trustee post-Arc decision, and this does not contradict the first sentence because that's part of the Accommodation Review Process. This is post-accommodation review decision.
Do I have a second for that amendment, trustee Turkster? Do I have commentary on the amendment? Or...
Trustee, order to the amendment. To the amendment, Madam Chair. That may take place, but there would be a recommendation that has to come from the ARC committee. Or are you going to make some assumptions here? Because the ARC committee can recommend that this be entertained at the board level for the system boundary, but you can't presuppose that we put that into the policy itself because the recommendation has not been accepted.
No, my understanding is that process that would start perhaps in an ARC discussion that may in fact bring up the notion of, oh, obviously, we have to deal, the board will have to deal with that issue. They're not recommending how the board deals with the issue, but it would come here for this board to decide whether they want to deal with the issue, and then, of course, how... I'll go to trustee Simmons, please. This is on the amendments, if we could.
Yeah, on the amendment. Now, this is really nothing different than what we saw in the King George ARC, which was already mentioned. There are two, if my memory serves correct, there are two recommendations by the ARC committee. One was to look at the catchment of the other school, to see if there is a small cohort from the area of the ARC that may go into this new boundary. The second was for some courtesy transportation, because the way the schools were going to line up, there was some issues around safety and railway tracks north of Barton Street. And so those sort of recommendations or suggestions came to the board, which the board acted upon pretty much at the same time as we were acting upon the ARC decision as well. So they kind of flowed that way, but it was, staff was able to operationalize those.
Okay, thank you for that example. To the amendments, we have trustee White moved and trustee Turkster seconded that another bullet be added under the activation of a boundary review, which would come from a trustee post-Arc decision. Any other comments to the amendment? All in favor of the amendments? Thank you. That is unanimous. Then to the main motion as amended. Oh, the main report, which was moved by trustee White and seconded by trustee Glazer. All those in favor? Thank you. And thank you, trustee Turkster, for walking us through that and being very patient as we tried to figure out what was going on.
What I had.
Yes. Thank you very much. And now we'll return the gavel to the vice chair.
I stole all your papers. Talk to Tim. Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Welcome to our policy meeting. Thanks to trustee Turkster. So if anyone else would like to join, it's usually what it's like. So moving on to item number 11, which is a notice of motion, Long-Term Facilities Master Plan Accommodation Review Schedule. This is a notice of motion brought to us by trustee Johnstone, which is to remind folks of our new governance rules. By a simple mover and second, this will be put on the floor for discussion. So I just ask trustee Johnstone, if you could first read the notice of motion before introducing the... Thank you.
Where are we? On that, you said, Chair?
Trustee, order.
So we're actually bringing this in action today?
Yes, if there is a mover and second, it will be lifted. Trustee Johnstone.
Whereas there still remains approximately 5,000 surplus elementary people places throughout the Hamilton-Winmore District School Board, whereas the Accommodation Review Process takes an entire school year to complete, continuity and membership is essential for an Accommodation Review Committee to function effectively and efficiently. Whereas trustees act as a resource and non-voting member of the Accommodation Review Committees, and the potential exists for trustees to be elected to the board after the commencement of the three elementary accommodation reviews, or postponed, excuse me, proposed for the 2014-2015 school year. Be it resolved, that is part of the Long-Term Facilities Master Plan update. Staff incorporates a break in the Accommodation Review Schedule for the 2014-2015 school year for the reasons outlined above.
Thank you, trustee Johnstone. Are you moving?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there a second there? Trustee Bishop? All right, trustee Johnstone to speak to the motion.
I think that the motion is pretty much self-explanatory. The only part that I did want to add was a case of clarification, that this will not impact the current accommodation reviews. This motion will only postpone the accommodation reviews scheduled to commence next fall. And I guess the other thought that I wanted to include was that our communities have put in a lot of work to the reviews that have been gone through, and our communities have also gone through a lot of change as of late, and it's time for a rest.
Thank you. Welcome to trustee Bishop as a second there.
Mr. Chairman, I think the mover has made it clear that the intent is to stay straightforward. I think, again, would like to also reiterate that this is not about any reconsideration of our process for elementary arts and reviews. This is not about, it's more about doing this in a consistent manner that will lead to the least problems. Change of membership during this process is, it can be extremely difficult, as we saw, some of us can remember that this, we saw this in about 2002, I think, is where we had an election at the same time, and this led to halfway through a process, and it really led to difficulties, because in essence, you have to do all the in-service we're going to get for the trustees, and it's very difficult. But it's not about postponing, aren't it designed to bring them out, but the elimination of 5,000 surplus elementary seats. It's a consideration for a break at this particular point.
Thank you. Trustee Brennan.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I think that my questions are mainly to staff, just for clarification for me, if I may. Just in general of the, those items that were scheduled, when were they supposed to have started? So which areas were they to start in? And, well, I don't know if we can know the answer to this, but what's the unintended negative consequences of not starting them?
So, Mr. Director, there's three questions there.
Through you, Mr. Chair. All did one and three ask the officer to do. One is they were supposed to commence next September. Two, if I carry the motion correctly, there will not be a change to the already agreed upon timelines. It would simply move them back one year. If I'm understanding that correctly, there, I don't see any unintended negative consequences. And I knew the officer would need to answer the exact areas that are being considered presently in the scheduling.
Officer Dow, be it... Through you, Mr. Chair. The three areas include West Hamilton City, East Mountain, and Lower Stony Creek.
Thank you. Okay. Trustee Brennan.
My only concern, then, about Lower Stony Creek, and forgive me, Bob, if I'm getting it wrong, but is this not the area that perhaps for some time had been looking for an accommodation review? I just want to know about that, even in the long-term.
Right, Mr. Brennan. Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, this would be an area that is indeed, as are frankly all of the ones on the schedule. So the question before you is, is the timing of it appropriate for the important work that does need to be done? But that's obviously your decision with this motion. Trustee Brennan.
Yeah, thank you very much for the answers to my question. I am very much in support of the motion, and I will be supporting it. I just wanted to absolutely clear that something that needs to be done is, will be done, and of course, it will be. Nothing is being neglected, but on the other hand, there is some real good reasoning around not doing it, starting in September, and certainly as a system allowing us the opportunity to fully form through the implementation stages of the ones that are currently coming. So I will be supporting this motion.
Thank you. To trustee Turkster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I thank trustee Johnstone very, very much for bringing this forward. I will be supporting it 100%. It does move the entire Long-Term Facilities Master Plan forward, backwards, however you want to say it, by one year. And I think it's actually a great time reflection to see how the other ARCs have completed their work and implemented the changes. Gives us a little bit of breathing room. And I think also for any new trustees, next December, to be thrown into an ARC would just be cruel. They would need to meet with their school councils, get to know their school communities. They may be part of the community, but you have to get to know the school community. So this makes an enormous amount of sense. So I thank the mover and the initiator of this motion and second for getting it on the floor tonight so that staff can rework the Long-Term Facilities Master Plan. Yes, thank you.
Perfect. Trustee, order.
Well, my question is that then this is not being held up because of an impending election? Because that would be important to me, because the last time we did this, we didn't even start the ARC. It was just delayed at that time, and the trustees elected not to go for it because election was coming up. But we are over here, what we're saying is, we want to delay the second series of ARCs and use that opportunity to run an election and also to study what happened with the first set of ARCs. This is what we, elementary ARCs. This is what we're saying? And if this is what we're saying, how fair are we to the current ARCs that are in motion right now?
Are you asking the question to the mover?
Well, I'm not sure who should answer this for me, but I'm looking at a couple of things. I'm looking at breather, we'll do this, well, for two reasons. First, because of the election. Secondly, it's because we're going to look at what the earlier ARCs have accomplished and what we made in mistakes. Is this what we're doing?
Or...
Are we just saying this is a good time to stop with the secondary ARCs coming up because it's an election? Then we have to be mindful of responding to our public about that. That's my concern, because we are in the process of looking at elementary school ARCs. So that's my question. What is the real purpose?
So I'll look to the mover, trustee Johnstone.
Great. So if you look back to the motion itself, it doesn't talk about there being any changes to future ARC processes. Really, what it's talking about is taking a break and for continuity, so that we don't have a trustee, so we can have a single trustee that is consistent through the entire ARC process, rather than having someone new elected halfway through, and then you're having to really catch the trustee up. And that's exactly what trustee Turkster mentioned, that trustee is likely having to get to know their community and whatnot. So this is about consistency and having someone, the same person, through the entire process.
Trustee, order.
I could agree with that for, because of the nickels coming on the block. I agree with that, but that isn't how this went to be initially, where we're into an election, so this is a good time to take a break. And the trustee has answered, that is not what her intention was. But she didn't say that her intention was to allow the new trustees coming on staff to acquaint themselves with the communities. That was not said here. That certainly is because trustee Turkster brought that up. And I agree with trustee Turkster, looking at it for that very reason.
Perfect. Thank you, trustee Oregon. I have trustee Peddell next. Mr. Peddell, can you try to speak, and let's see if I can make you.
I just... That's my part, just to trouble you, because the background, the mics are not really relied on, so hopefully you can all hear me.
Yes.
I cannot support this notice of motion. I find that the timing is actually going to be viewed badly for the trustees that are standing for reelection, and it may be perceived that they are using their current position to avoid maybe difficult decisions during election year. I think, as the producer just said, it's somewhat unfair to the elementary ARCs that are going on right now, and it's overall unfair to the system because we're delaying a year to get to start a very difficult work. So I cannot support this. We knew all this when these motions, these ARCs were approved. So as election year goes closer and decisions get made about leadership tonight, and elections move larger and larger, and I believe that this is very, very bad off, and we will continue steadily to go make these difficult decisions and don't delay anything. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Peddell. Trustee Mahala.
Sure, Stephen, I guess I agree with trustee Peddell. As you say, the problem is that, no problem, there'll be no change in the existing ARC process going on now, so they will make their recommendations in January, February. No, but my problem is that what is fair to the rest of, what is fair to the East ARC, the Three ARCs that are working hard now, when the other rest of the system, their schools are not investigating? when the other rest of the system, their schools are not investigating? In other words, if you kind of used that, the fact is, a number of schools recommend enclosure, then why shouldn't that process go for the entire system? At that bottom. So you're taking a break for a year. All you're doing is saying, okay, I can protect my school in that area for another year. That's the sole purpose. If you really look underneath, is that I could see down in East End, we're making recommendations for January and February. And I can see other areas in the city that I was thinking of. The next ARC, I could delay that a year, because it's going to affect my schools. That's not consistent. The word equity has been mentioned every board meeting in the last six months. That's not fair to the ARC that are now working hard to delay the rest of the system. If you're going to make it fair across the system, then stick with the process. It's only a four-month process. It's not a year.
Okay, other speakers? Trustee Simmons.
Just a question to the mover, whether she has any other ARCs.
Trustee Johnstone?
No, I do not for the, for the timing that I suggested for a break.
Thank you. Any further speakers? I did get a quick message from trustee Johnstone, or trustee Peddell, who said that she was cut off, and she wasn't able to finish her point. So I'll just ask trustee Peddell, are you, can you hear me?
I can, I'm sure. I just, I'm trying to get out one last point. Can I make it out?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Okay, so my other point is that we've also gone through a fall story through the ARC role, trustee. And the role has been, during the growth of the ARC, changed to more device, not device, of overform the thing. We're not supposed to be participating in such. So anybody who's any for reelection, or anyone who wants to be a trustee, is knowing that these things are happening in their areas. They're going to come along, and they're almost going to be a mirror image of the current trustees, that they're going to, years are going to listen. If they want to be elected, they surely will be absolutely. So, you know, I also see a possibility of problems, because whether to reelect a trustee, or replace a trustee who worked hard, who went over the dissonance, there's going to be a rare decision. And I'm also sure the staff will be training them up in an orientation session. So I'm not, I'm not feeling that that's any compelling reason. Controversial in my mind, though not your fault. They will be aware.
Thank you, trustee Peddell. So on the motion from, sorry, there's only one time speakers. Yes, yes, this is a bit of an exception, just because apparently we ended our call or cut off. So to the original motion, moved by trustee Johnstone, is seconded by trustee Bishop. All in favor? That's trustees. Oh, I'm sorry, you're absolutely right. Sorry, we're going to postpone that. To a closing remark from the mover. Thank you, trustee Johnstone. Please, you have the floor.
Thank you, through the chair. What I wanted to add was that these are difficult decisions. And our communities deserve a trustee who is present throughout the entire process. And I have to ask, what about the accommodation reviews that have come before or after, that have not had a disruption of a new trustee coming in? Does that put those past and future ARCs at an advantage? So I want trustees to consider, I want you to consider what is fair, and what will facilitate the best process to make the best decisions about our students' educational needs.
Thank you, trustee Johnstone. So once again, on the motion, sorry, for clarification, trustee Orban.
I need clarity, because what the trustee has now added came from trustee Turstra. So that would be an amendment to this particular notice of motion.
Thank you, trustee Orban. So just to clarify, what we are voting on is not the whereas clauses. We are voting only on the be resolved at the bottom. So despite the intent, the action is exactly the same. So it's simply the action, not the intent. If you disagree with the intent, then you can certainly oppose if you choose. So, once again, for the third time, all in favor? Trustees Turstra, Glaser, Brennan, White, Bishop, Johnstone, student trustee Zenazem, student trustee Susick, trustee Simmons, opposed. Trustees Orban, Mahalind, and Peddell, motion carries. Moving on to the next item, which we just moved down the agenda, and that, just to remind you, is 6B from the consent agenda. And that is, sorry, 6A from the consent agenda, which is a moment summary October 31st, 2013. And trustee Simmons had a question. Trustee Simmons.
Thank you, quick question with regards to the old-day kindergarten. I'm just wondering if we're now getting funding for all of our old-day kindergarten children, especially with the, the added numbers, unexpected numbers that we saw coming in.
Mr. Director. Through you, Madam Chair, to the superintendent of business.
Through the chair. We are not getting any additional funding for kindergarten. So all of those additional students, which did add additional teacher requirements, did add to the budget. So that being said, there was no additional EPO for those students, but we do receive half of the grant, just like we would for any other kindergarten student. So the half of the grant that we did receive for them did cover the cost of the additional teachers.
Perfect, thank you. Trustee Simmons?
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions or comments on this item? Seeing none. Before we move to the jury, I just wanted to remind folks quickly of the upcoming meetings on the back of your agenda. Your self-explanatory set for CAC, which is scheduled for December 11th. That is actually a joint meeting prepared by all the committees on the 10th at the, in fact, I don't think it's built at High School. Do you move the location, superintendent's opinion to Dr. Davy? Kathy Weaver? So that's the only, that's the only correction. So I'm looking for a adjournment, sorry, to trustee, to trustee Susick.
Sorry, just an amendment that was made on our part. It says here that the student senate date is set for Wednesday, December 18th. That was pushed one week earlier. So just in case anyone were intending to go, it is on Wednesday, December 11th.
Don't forget anything you read on the back.
Essentially.
So we're looking for a motion to adjourn. All these, trustee Brennan and trustee Mahalind, second. Let's, all in favor? Carry. Thanks, everyone. Thanks, Laura.